Welcome to the Tuesday, March 3rd, meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. I officially call this meeting to order, which is intended to be our budget workshop presentations and then discussing our FY '21 budget. So I will turn it over to Dr. DeFalco and Mr. Erich White.
Thanks so much. Good evening, everybody. So it has been quite a journey so far. We've had a series of budget workshops to date. This is our last workshop on schedule, and this evening we have two really important things to discuss. And I will just quickly introduce kind of both items and then tee it off to Tanya Kirk-Ward, our principal from the middle school, who's going to really kind of take us through the first piece of our agenda this evening. As the committee knows, we have been hard at work looking deeply at the what and the how, or the curriculum, the instruction and learning practices of our current literacy program that we have, K-12 across the district. And this work really started with our findings that came from our Johns Hopkins report that you all remember last year receiving. And you also know that part of our blueprint for district improvement, we have a very strong focus on making sure that our teachers and students have the right materials in front of them in all content areas, at all grade levels, to really help lift and lead the teaching and learning forward. And this year, the focus of our curriculum renewal and revision cycle was literacy. And tonight, we are going to hear from some very fine educators who have been hard at work, leading this work for us across the district to make sure that we have the right literacy materials in the hands of our teachers and the most highest quality texts and text complexity in front of our kids. And so with all of that, I'm going to actually introduce Tanya, if you could come on up and kind of tee us off here into our discussion this evening around how we came to what we're going to hear about this evening.
It might be a little late, but.
Anytime. Everybody has a hard copy.
Okay. So we're very excited to come here because it's been a very long process with a great group of people. So first, I just want to say this is something that was somewhat new, but not new. You know, as a teacher, I've been part of the curriculum revision and writing as an English teacher, and so that was very exciting to take on the piece with literacy since I know it's still a love of mine. So I spend plenty of time still reading and reading to my daughter. So the first part of this project was that we started to work with ANET, with Corey Hamner, and she kind of laid out the whole vision and the process of what we were going to do each of the three days that we had spent with her. And in order to know what was going on, we had conferences, phone conferences, Dr. DeFalco and myself with her, where she laid out the agenda for the day. We reviewed it, went over everything, and finalized it. And then after each day that we spent working, we also had post-meetings, phone conferences with her about what went, how can we make it better for the next time. So we've done a lot of work in three full days, but there's been a lot of work done with this committee outside of the school day. So just want to send a very big thank you to them for all of the work and the hours that they have spent outside of the school time reviewing reports, looking at different, you know, different literacy programs, and then really taking to heart what's going to work best for their grade level and for the students that are in front of them every day. So the first day we had, it was a full day, and it was in October where we did make sure that we looked at and Corey had looked at and reviewed and put into their, the findings from the Johns Hopkins study. Then we also looked at three main lenses of what we were going to do for this literacy program. Looking at the alignment to meaningful standards, especially making sure it met Massachusetts standards.
Clicker.
Oh, I forgot I was supposed to click.
There you go.
Sorry, I forgot I had a present behind me. Changed the building and I'm all messed up. Vision, a vision and creating a cohesive K-12 vision for excellent instruction and what the needs of our community was. So before we started, we did a group self-assessment to find out exactly where the teachers felt that we were beyond what the Johns Hopkins study had said. And had a very lengthy discussion about how do we close the opportunity gaps for our students, especially within the subgroups of students that we have. And then also digging into the three main shifts that have changed in the literacy when we moved over to Common Core and then the new math state standards. Those three shifts were regular practice with complex texts and its academic language, reading, writing, and speaking that's grounded in evidence from text. So if you hear, you know, giving evidence-based information or contextual evidence, that that's a huge push from students for now for them to give us. And something that we all found was very interesting in how to build students' knowledge through content-rich fiction. And we've actually taken those discussions outside of that meeting time about what exactly does it mean to build students' knowledge through what they read? So they don't, if a student hadn't gone to a particular field trip or something by reading these different materials, they would have the same knowledge base as other students. From there, that was one full day. For the next day, the next time we met, it was in November, and we had worked on crafting out the vision statement. And so what I have for you to share is the vision statement that we crafted. It's really more, it's actually more of statements because it's a page and a half. So I just want to point out the key pieces. So together as a team, we worked on crafting this entire vision for English Language Arts Instruction for our district. And then Corey took it and kind of crafted the language a little bit better, and then we shared back our feedback. So I really want to just talk about some key aspects. For the top box, it says, "In Blackstone Millville School District, we seek for students' ELA experience to be collaborative and engaging, rigorous, accessible to all students." So under the collaborative and engaging, some of the key pieces are that they are excited for, they care about, and they're interested in their English classes. Classrooms are inviting, and the instruction is interactive, and there's a sense of collaboration as students learn together and from one another. Collaboration is facilitated by students, staff, and community members, and they feel empowered, the students, through risk-taking activities, to create a lifelong love of learning and reading. Rigorous is that students are spending their time reading, writing, and speaking about texts that are complex and on grade level, and they're doing it of their own ownership, and they're doing all the cognitive work. And that they're building knowledge within their classes, but also across classrooms, subjects, and grading. Accessible to all students, that the content is challenging for all, yet is empowering, and that students are persevering through challenging and difficult texts and topics. In order to achieve this vision, in the next box, we seek for ELA teachers to be collaboratively developing, so they're interacting with each other to plan and teach, they're supporting one another, and they also feel supported and valued and appreciated by given time, materials, and training to implement the curriculum successfully. That they're flexible risk takers, that there's a growth mindset among teachers and a willingness to get comfortable with the uncomfortable. And you definitely saw that for the main, the main three days we were together. Providing rigorous ELA instruction for all students, that they are prioritizing and supporting rigorous instruction in their classrooms through the use of complex grade level tasks. And then it was broken down even further of what you would see in the different levels. So elementary, it would be developmentally appropriate and rigorous. There would also be a focus on foundational skills such as phonics and decoding to support students in developing reading skills. And also a need for social emotional focus where students are developing real world habits and skills. In the middle school, we felt it was important to support, that the students needed support and engaging with one another in self-regulatory strategies, needed time to interact with each other to build their social skills. Students would reflect on how they learned and what they learned, and the social and developmental aspects of learning in the classroom. At the high school, students received specialized course content and electives. Groups are heterogeneous in 11th and 12th grade with C P and honors, and that they seek to maintain teacher input options on autonomy and their own voice, and to have a variety. And then there's still a second page. I don't know if you want me to go into that, but you can look at that later. So once we did do that, the main thing we really started to do, which is kind of new, I was just telling Dr. DeFalco the other day, we had gone to a state conference for RTI, and I felt like I was in a presentation of exactly what we were doing. And they were talking about ed reports and how you to use ed reports to use the best research behind your choices, which ed reports didn't even exist since about only 2015. So it's something brand new, and most of the administrators in the room didn't even know what ed reports are. So I felt like we were one up on that. So what I have here, and the teachers will speak to it more when they're presenting, but what I did is I made a chart of the three gateways. There's so much information and knowledge on ed reports about all of the different programs. But the key aspects is what did the ones that we are choosing to go with and why, and what they, you might hear a lot of people say, "Well, they were in the green, they were in the green." What the green means is there was three levels. If you meet the expectations for Gateway One, which you had to have out of 58, you can see what they scored, which was close to very high. And as long as you met for Gateway One, they would then research and look into the, to that program for Gateway Two. If they did not meet minimum standards for Gateway One and Two, they would not even looked at for Gateway Three. So these programs were all looked at for Gateway One, Two, and Three. And so I have at the top of that column what Gateway One means, and that's with text quality, the complexity, the alignment to the standards, the task and the questions that are grounded in evidence. So the key part, the key questions that they asked for this gateway are, are the quality anchor texts at the grade level text complexity? Do they represent the rigor and balance addressed in the standards? Are the tasks and questions in reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language aligned to grade level standards? And do they support student learning? So those are the key questions that had to be asked in the research in order to get a green light in Gateway One. Gateway Two is the part that we found the most interesting back when I said that first day was about building knowledge through the texts that are chosen, the vocabulary, and the tasks that students have to do. Gateway One, they have to answer the question, "Do materials build students' knowledge across topics and content areas? Is instruction intentionally and coherently sequenced to build vocabulary? Do questions and tasks build to culminating tasks that demonstrate students' ability to analyze components of the text and the topics?" If they met both of those gateways, then they would go to Gateway Three. And there are plenty of programs, if you go on ed report, that did not get green lighted for all three gateways. So the programs that we have chosen and will be presenting did get to Gateway Three, which is how are the instructions, is about the usability, the instructional supports for students, and the usability for the teachers and the students in using the materials. And does, and the main question for that one is, "Does the instructional material support high-quality instruction?" So on that November day, it took us, because we didn't just look at these three main programs, we went in looking at all of the programs for literacy, for our grade levels, that were green-lighted in ed reports, and looked at Gateway One and Two. We didn't even have time to get to Gateway Three, because there's that much information. So then for homework, what the committee did was then spent time, and presentations were set up with all the multiple different publishing companies so they could showcase their programs to us. All those materials did come to the middle school, all housed in the room next door, where we looked through those each day when we were there as well, deciding which programs, looking at the text, looking at kid-friendliness, how did it look visually too, not just other things. And then our final day of the journey, meeting with Corey, but certainly not the final day, but not the end of our journey, is we continued to finalize and look at those ed reports and looking at Gateway One, which was the usability piece, as well as as a group coming to consensus, what would be our top one and two choices? And then making sure that those one and two choices did have green in all three gateways from ed reports. Then they also decided when would they test drive some of these lessons. And those have, the test drives have been happening and looking at seeing. And they also, we've also set up, so the high school will speak a little bit, they went to Salem High School to see it being implemented there, their choice. And then the elementary went to Upton School District, and we, the middle school, have not got to visit anyone because the closest is Niagara Falls, so we didn't get to go there, but we're working on a way to somehow virtually visit with the school that's working with them. So they have been working on for the homework since that last date, test driving the different lessons, and then having follow-up meetings, what worked with the lessons, what didn't work, and what didn't work, what professional development would be needed moving forward to roll this out. And then they're also completing the district curriculum review rubric for anti-bias to make sure that we have a well-rounded literacy program for our students. The last piece that I wanted to share, that I had found the slide though, is Corey had said that she really wanted to showcase the work that ANET had did with our district, and so she created it, and it is housed on their website of the partnership that we had with ANET. And so I'm just going to give you that document that she wrote to share about her, their experience working with us and our experience working with them. Did anyone have any questions before we move on to the grade levels?
So can I just summarize? So Tanya, it sounds like what you're saying is you and the literacy committee went straight to the data, went straight to the research.
Right.
And said, "What does the research say about existing literacy models, programs that are out there now in circulation, being used, and what is the impact essential in these three gateways, text quality, building knowledge, and usability?" And what I heard you say is that you looked at just the programs that had the strongest impact rating on each one of these gateways, and you started with the data, and you started with the research.
Yeah.
Okay. So tell me a little bit about.
Because we were actually looking more towards some other programs, and then when we really got into them, we didn't think that they would excite the students as much as the programs that ended up being the top choice.
Okay. So tell me a little bit about this ed reports. It was developed by whom?
It's a national.
Yeah, but developed by a publishing company or developed by a university?
No, it's not.
Developed by a.
Developed by a.
Developed by who?
It's a nonprofit.
Like who feeds this data into it?
It's a nonprofit, and they have all different people who become part of the curriculum and the committee, and they have set standards. You can go right on there. That's really where I pulled, where I was reading from you, like what the questions were.
Right.
This is one page of the four, of the whole document that they use to review the different programs.
And it's updated as more people.
Right. So when we first were starting this work, Wonders was not up there yet. And just at the, just before the, our final day of meeting with Corey, they put up the report where Wonders had gotten a green light because the 2000, the previous version did not have a green light. So we weren't looking at Wonders in the first place. But the new version, 20, the 2020 version that we will be purchasing did. And that, that report, like I said, that was updated on the day before we met, like a week before the December meeting that we had.
Anybody else have any questions at this point?
Okay. Okay. So what the, each level's going to do is they have pretty much the similar content, but they're going to say, why did they choose that particular program for their grade level, what they're excited about, what the need is? And then each level is going to break down a separate question that's different. So for the elementary level, when we worked with Corey on that last day, is what is this choosing this program and all of these programs, what is that going to mean for teacher practice? And then for the middle school, what are the changes that parents might expect? And then for the high school, their focus will be, what will be some of the changes that the students will expect with these programs? And then I'll come back for the last slide about nine steps.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So first up, we'll have the elementary students, we're to have Danielle Keen speak first, and I think she might, I don't know if anyone's going to sit with her, are they going to have her all by herself?
Yes, of course.
Oh, they're really making you come alone?
Yeah. Sure.
Same with you, Danielle.
Thank you, yes. So as you can see, we are, our selection was Wonders. It was kind of interesting what happened with us, as Tanya was saying, there's a three gateways that we were looking towards, to really make sure that they had been, you know, passed a green light on each one before we could select it. And going in initially, we were presented with two other options that at the time were, had been approved, and we kind of had Wonders in the back of our minds because we'd heard how other similar demographic districts were just attaining success with Wonders. And, you know, colleagues we'd spoken to in other districts really had great things to say about it, and timing worked out perfectly. Halfway through us meeting, it had reached all those gateways and became accessible for us to look at. So right away, we kind of knew that it had the things that we were looking for, but then also had tried and true methods from other people that, you know, that we'd heard great feedback on. So as you look at the first point, it says it scored strongly for student impact on ed reports. So it does, if you look at the grid, out of 42 points on Gateway One, it was right there at the top, 42, 32 for Gateway Two, and the last one, out of 34, 31. So it didn't meet all the necessary bonus. The main focus of Wonders is that it's student-centered, yeah, I'm going to say it, student-centered small group teaching, mini lessons embedded with support for English language learners, gifted talent students, and students in need of tier-two support. We were lucky enough to go to Upton to see it in action, and what the teachers there kept saying was, this is what we already knew, but they actually set it in practice. So it has a social-emotional component, which is really strong and obviously becoming more and more necessary in today's classroom. The fact that it allows for so many mini lessons and so much student-centered, small group activities, you could really see how engaged they were with the lessons themselves and also with the independent work. Their tiered intervention, it has the level of rigor for the students that are already coming in with a great oral language, sophisticated dialogue at home. It's still going to challenge them, but then our other students that are coming in on the lower end who haven't had that background knowledge, it's still meeting them at their level and pushing them to that higher level of rigor. So that was tremendous. The resources are designed to help teachers build mastery of reading, writing, speaking, listening, and thinking across content areas. The phonics piece, the grammar, it's all embedded right in there, because that was something that being.
And the vocabulary.
The vocabulary. K through five, you go from learning to read to reading to learn, and it was, all of us had our own concerns at our grade level, but it was able to, you know, prove to us that it was going to have what we needed. The kindergarten teachers were great because they really informed us of what they're looking for in a curriculum to make sure that they're getting their students who are either coming in with no phonetic awareness and phonics skills, that it'll get them to where they need to go. But then at the fifth grade level, you know, my concern was, is it preparing them for middle school? And with certainty, I quoted it.
Yeah, I was concerned from K all the way to five, but we were excited that kindergarten group, Sarah's here this evening, but she, her and Sherry really loved it right off the bat. They just loved it. Even though we've had a phonics program that we're trying to improve right now, they feel like this phonics program could work for the students also. So we're going to see how that works when it rolls out. We absolutely, we tried lessons. Do you try lessons too?
Definitely.
I literally liked the note-taking piece of it too. The students follow a lesson, and they actually respond in writing much of the time throughout the beginning initial lesson, using the vocabulary on them, and they're always focused on that essential question all the way through the text, all the way through the two-week unit that they have to learn. So that essential question is always out there, so they have to reconnect back to the question and understand why they're reading or don't read.
And I think to just echo on that, you know, as educators, we want to know like the hell and the why, like, why are we doing this? And do the students know why they're doing this? Like that we're not just getting up and teaching them, that they can buy in and be invested in their lessons. And having that essential question, when we went to Upton, it was posted in every classroom. The students could recite to you why they were doing, the课lesson that they were doing. It gives you a two-week window, so it gives you enough time, I guess. The previous model was only a week, and the new 2020 version is actually, actually two weeks. So the vocab is up for two weeks, that exposure, that they're there for so much longer. And I guess that they, the takeaway after two weeks is they're seeing that the students are really hitting what they need to hit in each topic as they go through the units.
And there's also a unit assessments and a writing connection in each unit. A lot more writing.
Right. So that's basically why we chose Wonders. Can we just hit this? There we go. So the excitement about, it was interesting to see the, when we brought the materials into the classroom, to see the students' reaction to it. They're definitely colorful, they're engaging, the stories themselves, the vocabulary. My students responded well to it. I was able to, my colleague in the classroom next door also piloted it, and same thing from her classroom. And I was able to talk to our students because I worked with them during RTI, and it seemed like they really, they loved it, and for different reasons. So that was really nice. And then also being able to see the scope and sequence. It's going to offer a vertical alignment that we really don't have at the moment, and consistency across the entire grade band. A lot, a lot of cooperative, collaborative work for students, and a lot of the classrooms now are using the turn and talk.
Turn and talk.
And that's built right into the lesson plans, so it's going to be things that they're already familiar with.
And that's listening and speaking piece.
Right.
A lot of discussion, and we have opportunities to do that more frequently.
Definitely. The increase in all genres of writing, and as well as having just the different genres in their, in their reading as well, the exposure to literature, nonfiction, science.
And the comparison and contrast of the two different types of literature. Sometimes they'd be given a piece, and this is very common on MCAS, where they're given a piece of fiction and a piece of nonfiction, and then they have to find some kind of, they have to draw some comparisons between the information both. Something that, and materials is rigorous, but it's teachable, and they all are going to be involved in that piece of everything. There's so much happening in a very cohesive way, so exciting. We're going to be able to integrate information more successfully, I think, with this program. Really excited about it. And the kids liked it too. Even in the two lessons that we taught, they were just like following along and felt successful.
Right.
They felt successful. They're like, oh, and well, we taught a three, we taught the third unit. Did you have a third unit? We had a third unit, it was mid-year. And that's where we were when we taught the lesson, and they had already seen like the idea in detail and summarizing, and they could do it. But it was more engaging because it was really easy to follow along, and the text kind of highlights the vocabulary, and there's so much extra, I'd like to say bells and whistles, but they're valuable bells and whistles, they're not just with one other program.
Permasol.
It's permasol. We didn't, when we saw one other program, it was just too many, too much lamb and not enough content.
Right. The potatoes.
It was like, wow, this is all pretty, but it didn't have enough of this really focused instruction. I love it.
The last bullet, that eases with planning differentiation, meeting individual needs of the students without sacrificing the rigor. The tiered intervention piece, I cannot say enough for. To know that our special ed students, as well as those who maybe aren't on an IP or not planned yet, but they're still in that lower 25, that we're going to be able to reach them with the exact same curriculum that the general ed classroom, that there's just going to be, it's going to mirror one another and marry one another, is amazing. So you know that nobody, there's no inconsistency, that everybody's being presented with the same, and being able to get them up there. And their intervention piece is almost like a RTI that, you know, that they're trying to move the students along within a, in a cyclical way to try to raise them up.
There are lessons in each unit for, to supplement and match the lessons that they're learning inside the regular classroom, so you could teach a little bit more about the vocabulary, the use of vocabulary in different ways, and it's just, the resources were there for us.
To not have to go searching, which was huge. One thing we learned when we went to Upton as well is, while it's not out yet, they are going to have another component called WonderWorks, which will be their special ed component, that again, directly mirrors what the general ed curriculum is, but down the road, it's just something that we know while we, you know, don't adopt it right away, something that's going to be accessible to us in the future. So I thought that that was huge. So I thought that that was huge. I don't know what I hit last time. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I didn't say anything. So materials for comprehensive teaching, the literacy standards. I mean, I think the biggest need is the fact that, we can't say right now that it's consistent against the entire grade, that teachers are pulling different materials from different resources to meet the students in front of them.
To adjust the standard.
And it, right, to adjust, exactly. So just knowing that all students are gonna be presented with the same material, all the standards are gonna be met, I think that no one would argue that the greatest resource in the classroom is obviously a knowledgeable instructor, but having this curriculum is just gonna free up so much more time for the students in front of us. So I think that that's just exciting. The program's consistent throughout the grade bands, and mentor texts and level readers are provided. They're inclusive and connected, and also the technology piece that goes into that is amazing, that the way education's going, that it's not just gonna be books in front of them, but that they'll be able to access it online. What does it mean for teacher practice? So as I just said, the previous times of planning and looking for the resources, now we've spent better use of time collaborating with colleagues, discussing lessons, student learning, achievement, and areas of opportunities. Another thing that, it's not listed on here, but just the fact that we'll have common assessments and student work samples that will be the same, that we can pull together and look to see, you know, success in all classrooms, or being able to find the root cause of what we're doing well and what needs improvement, will be huge. The online professional development, they have an online piece, so it's accessible 24/7, you can go online, you have professional development, or have questions answered at any time. The transition to Wonders is gonna be familiar. The Wonders workshop experience is very similar to what we're implementing now with Reader's Workshop. And then...
The writing is powerless to empowering writers, and there's a lot of similar concepts that are introduced and empowering writers.
Right, and...
We've been exposed to it.
And it was interesting, in Upton, they again, pulled in the Writer's Workshop, and then they also pulled in the Foundation, so two things that we're already using. So not to say that that's necessarily what we're gonna do, those decisions will have to be made, but just to know that it's already been done, and we can kind of create a professional learning community with other districts that need be, and hear their insights and what's worked for them, and, you know, ideas on where to go.
We're talking about this today though, that it's a trusted, well-researched program. I'm familiar with a lot of the co-authors of the program, just in terms of studying, reading, and I value their, I value their knowledge, they're well, you know, trusted professionals. So, you know, that piece is really important to me personally, and also to my colleagues, that you're getting quality information, you're getting people, authors that know and have done a lot of research, and then authors of multiple, multiple books and journals. So it's...
I think it was interesting, it was, to see Janice, when we were at that meeting, and you opened up, and she starts seeing the names, and she's like naming them off, like the excitement that you saw, knowing that she could take bigger than that.
We're using them from books, we're using everything from their book, they say, oh, this is a good lesson. Now we can trust that they designed this reading program that is even more comprehensive. So really, really important to know that that's gonna be something that teachers can improve their, you know, improve their practice even more.
I have like six pages in notes that I'm sure you don't want to hear, so maybe we'll turn it over to questions.
It's something in the old board.
I'm very excited.
How are you doing?
I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
And I don't know if the question should be to you, or to Jason, or someone else in the room, but you just mentioned empowering writers. Are we continuing to use empowering writers if we implement this literacy?
Absolutely. So actually, I think one of the things that's really exciting about this is, we've had quite a few conversations with April. April's the head of empowering writers. There are a few school systems that have done exactly what we're doing, and so Randolph and Munson are two. And so what they've actually done is they've gone back and they have aligned the empowering writer structure in their system to Wonders. And so we are gonna be creating a PLC with those two systems, actually, I think we're gonna host here, we're still finalizing the details, to get our elementary teachers that are on our literacy committee, together with their lead elementary teachers on this work, to start sharing and collaborating resources around what didn't work with the empowering writers piece, and what did, and what's next. So we are absolutely sticking with it, and we're excited that, you know, that some of that alignment work has already been done.
Speaking about the decoding piece, at the kindergarten, first, second grade decoding, what, what does that look like in Wonders?
Can you sound like an expert in that a little bit better? Sarah, can you talk about the decoding aspect of it?
Yeah, I think that we were, excuse me, could I just ask your name and what grade you actually teach, because I don't...
Sarah.
Can you come up? Because I'm... Tim's starting to panic over there.
So everybody at home can hear your brilliance.
And I apologize, I don't know everybody's... I'm Sarah Dorfman, kindergarten. So your question was about the decoding, and so that was a big, that was probably one of the biggest things, at least for kindergarten. We've been, we've relied on foundations for a few years now, and it is tried and true, and, you know, but it's not a reading program. So when we started looking, it was very important to us that it would be something that wouldn't be, it needed to be as good or better. And, you know, as we started looking through the materials and really diving in and, you know, doing the practice lesson that we'd done, we needed to feel that that phonological piece was strong, which I think definitely, we've made it, we're, we feel good about being committed to the phonological piece. You know, the use of Elkonin boxes and segmenting, blending, the rhyming, all of that is laid out. It's a little bit different in terms of the sequence of letters, but again, I think we all felt very confident, you know, that that was okay. It's not a foundations, but it's just all-encompassing, which is, at this point, you know, so much more important, I think. We've always got foundations over here to, you know, fall back on, maybe, you know...
Use this tiered intervention?
Yes. I think, you know, we know that, but the fact that this is consistent, it's, you know, it does have the writing piece, it's, you know, something that, I don't know, like you said, we're all looking at so many, so many different things that have got to be put together, and it's just kind of coming in a nice package, so.
So I guess one of my concerns would be, and thank you guys, a very good description of what, what this program brings, but I guess my concern is that students who are already in intervention, working on phonics-based, either using foundations or at the upper levels, you know, Wilson, which we just spent...
Yep.
...a good amount of money for. If we're not going in the same order, so Wilson has a very specific order of sounds, and if a student is already receiving intervention in a, you know, according to Wilson or foundations, and now we're doing this, is that not going to confuse our data?
I wouldn't be concerned. I guess what I say is that, like, in kindergarten, when they introduce those letters at the beginning of the year, and it's, you know, two a week, primarily, it's done based on the letter formation, you know? You know, they do skyline letters, you know, so in terms of, you know, the way it's introduced, I don't think that that's, it's not...
I'm probably more worried about it at second, second and third, where they're already sort of processing, and we already see a difference of learning between, you know, Johnny next door, and so we've already implemented, you know, maybe tier-two or tier-three intervention, and now we're, now we're gonna use a new tool. So I just, that we happen to spend a lot of money on...
Right, and I don't think that it's...
We're not gonna use new tools. So the Wonders is for all students, tier-one. Foundations will still be there as a tier-two, and the Wilson is for the tier-three. So, you know, those are only, Wilson and Foundations will be for students who need extra support beyond the program that's in Wonders.
So then that goes back to my point, if we're doing it, if the, if the programs are in different order, like Wilson, like you just can't just jump around in Wilson, you can't, you know...
It was almost like when we took the shift from Bradley to Foundations, and you had some students that were doing Bradley, 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 then we implemented Foundations, and all of a sudden, things, there was a shift. I guess, if I can piggyback. That would be my question, is, let's say you have a second grader who's been doing Foundations from kindergarten in first grade, and now we're implementing this, not through kindergarten, because if you enter through kindergarten, you start the program, it's an easier move into kindergarten, I mean, first grade, second grade. So I think we're thinking more of the second and third grade, as they're already, they've already been using Foundations, they've already had this process in place. I guess the question is, how cohesive can that be if they had to go to a tier-two intervention, and they had to get the tier-two services through Foundations and Wilson? Would there be an easy rollout for those students, or are they moving into something that's very different to them, which might be causing maybe that tier-two intervention?
If I could, I actually think that transition will be, will be seamless for those kids, because when you're getting into bigger third, fourth grade, a lot of the phonics, phonemic awareness piece, if you're still working on a lot of that, then you are probably getting tier-two or tier-three instruction. So that level of intervention, I think, would feel similar to the student. I don't think it would feel any different.
Maybe if I said first grade, but it's just, it's really, my, I think the question, I could be wrong, too, but the question is, it doesn't matter the grade, I guess my point is that if a child has already started with Foundations, and now we've ruled out this particular program, and I haven't seen the phonics...
Right.
And then they have to be moved, those students might be struggling with, let's say, the new, and I haven't viewed the phonics piece of it, but my question is, now we have these, this pocket of students who need to have the tier-two, tier-three intervention, and we're putting in Foundations again, so they're having that shift. It doesn't matter the grade level, I guess, it's just, they're not entering it, they're not entering fresh as a kindergartner, just like if you were doing math and you roll out a math program, you're gonna have a gap for a number of years. I guess that's my question, because Foundations and Wilson have been true and tried, so that, I think...
Yeah, we're on the same.
And I don't wanna say that the way that another district, we're gonna have to figure this out for ourselves, and we're gonna figure out how we're gonna marry all of that together. But like, again, just when we look at the program itself in Upton, they kind of went through the same thing, so they offered some insights, and they, because we were even trying to figure out, like, what do we do with Foundations, and they were a huge advocate for keeping it, because they saw that more as a skill that they were able to use in conjunction with the phonics piece in Wonders, that they were able to marry them together, even for the core instruction. And I know that, like, you guys were such a huge advocate for Foundations, so the little piece, the piece that you were able to look at, you could see that it lined up enough, obviously, we're gonna have to dig down deeper into it.
Yeah, definitely.
But not gonna be that huge gap that it kind of maybe appears to be. It, in essence, seems like it's smaller than it. I mean, there's gonna be a transition no matter what, but it's not as...
Right, and obviously, it'll be a transition no matter what, but, I mean, in kindergarten especially, and I don't know, Esther, first grade, I'm imagining the same thing, but the gap, I mean, the gap, you know, of the crossover, especially with small group instruction and using the, you know, the Wonders program, the differentiation that's all involved there, you know, I, kindergarten level, I, you know, and I'm assuming first, second, that's not a gap that concerned us, like you said, it's something that was...
And it did with some of the other programs, like, some of it was so evident that she was like, I can't stand behind this because of, you know, you're such a believer in Foundations.
Yeah.
And this is the one that it seemed to marry best.
Definitely, but some of the other programs, I would have a hard time sitting here telling you that it was the best thing, because...
And I just want to weigh in on that too, because I think one of the things that's important to recognize, when you look at our student achievement numbers, particularly grade three, which is a very important threshold to look at, last year, we were at fifty-three percent of kids at benchmark, right, meeting or exceeding expectations. That was up ten percent from the year before. We do a lot of really good word work, and Foundations, I think, is one of the, is one of the root causes behind that. Kids do a lot of word attack processes, strategies, and they decode very well. We need to start moving the needle on the comprehension piece, and what I'm hearing you say is that, in this model, the phonics and phonemic awareness piece is embedded in the program. My sense is, and I've seen through reviewing the materials myself, that bleeds into the stories, it bleeds into the writing, so it's not being taught in isolation. Not that Foundations is the bad thing, because it isn't, it certainly has really good research behind it too, but it is very specific. It teaches one very specific piece of literacy. We know that high-impact literacy programs have six major components. Phonics and phonemic awareness is one of those. And so we were looking for something where we could actually take the phonics and phonemic awareness piece and ensure that it's embedded in the writing, it's embedded in the comprehension, it's embedded in the vocabulary, and it sounds like that's what we have.
I'm glad that you said that, because that's exactly it. And on top of it all, it needed to be developmentally appropriate, and by far, there was just not even a contest of, you know, what was appropriate, what we looked at in my eyes.
Right.
And, you know, what some of the others were, so that was very important to, you know, kindergarten, first grade, the appropriateness.
And we really looked at the students in front of us, like, there was some of it, some of the programs that were presented had text complexity that we knew for our students, like, yes, it was great, it was really high, but we would have such a challenge getting them there. So, you know, this had a certain level of rigor and set the bar to a certain expectation, without it being, you know, something that we couldn't achieve. We knew that we could get there, and we knew that it was setting it high enough that we were gonna have to work to that, but without...
Right, and touching on everything that you had said, Jason, the writing, the comprehension, you know, the phonemic piece and all of that, so.
And it was piloted at every grade level?
K through five. K through five. Yeah, everybody, we had everybody represented.
It wasn't really piloted, it was slumped in.
Slumped, yeah. Right.
Just to test it out, and then I took the, the teacher got home, because it's like, wow, two weeks is a lot. And then I went through all the lessons for that particular unit, and it was very, not, I don't like to say repetitive, but the format of it was very followable at that store, it was very easy to work, because I read through every single unit in that particular book. And it was like, oh, this is doable, now we can get through these in two weeks, two and a half weeks.
So I guess my question is, how much time was spent at each grade level? Because I can see here how much time you all spent researching and finding the programs, but in kindergarten...
Two weeks.
Was it a full two weeks that you gave to the students, or was it...
We aimed to teach, you know, a couple of lessons from each of the programs, just to ensure that this was the one.
So you introduced more than Wonders to the kindergarteners?
Just one other one, the one that was the backup one, because we weren't sure at that point, you know, you know, what was going to be approved, so we taught a lesson from the Ready Gen program.
So when, what timeframe was that? Was that after December, or...
Oh, yeah.
It was after, in the fifth grade, was it?
The same timing, so as soon as this was approved, and as soon as we got the materials for it, and it was, it came down to Ready Gen and Wonders, which I still love their spelling homework. We've been pulling pieces like it's...
Yeah. And then your concern of whether or not, you know, the tier-two and tier-three interventions are present, and what we use, the great thing about this is that there's progress monitoring. You have unit assessments, you have not just star data or F and P data, you have unit data that will give you ideas of how children are progressing, through the strategies, that's sort of like comprehension strategies.
And really...
And at the younger grades, the phonemic awareness strategies and the phonics strategies. And if a child is having trouble with a few things, and they don't need a whole lot of heavy intervention, they might need just about six weeks of intervention. They don't need a constant, you know, four years of intervention, hopefully. If they do, then there's something wrong, and that should be caught really early in life. So, you know, I'm, I love the fact that it's very comprehensive, and it has the assessment that we can test, and we use to evaluate how things are going with each and every student.
Right, and I think one of the other things is talked about, you know, when we were going with the Envisions program, was there is so much, and that's what we're excited about, the next piece of the process is what, you know, sort of aligning what it is we must do, and what we can do. And I just, it's exciting, you know, that there's so much available, that maybe this, okay, this isn't working as well, and we want to try this piece, so, you know, that's as with the Envisions.
And right, the way that they said it was like a buffet, there's, you know, your must-dos and then your can-do's, but there's so many other backup pieces to it, and I guess from what I've heard, and feedback I've gotten from others who are using it, the technology piece is the biggest part, that there's so much there that, I mean, you could devote an entire professional development to that, because so many resources that you'd be able to pull from, that we just don't have in one place right now, which was awesome.
You mentioned WonderWorks as a special ed component. It is not available right now? So is that something...
They're in the process of, my understanding of that, it's gonna be launched in 2021.
So what, what does Wonders offer as a tie-in to special ed?
So right now, it is tiered, so they, they definitely have it, so it meets everything. So I got the way... So I get, the way that I understand it is it's just a special ed component that will just marry the two curriculums. But it's very in the, I guess, early stages. Um, it's not to my knowledge that they have a, a twenty fifteen version, the way that they had the previous, um, editions.
So coming to.
Coming soon.
I think one of the things too, I thought was really powerful with the, with the leveled readers. So for instance, I looked at a unit on the solar system and there were, um, I wanna say, was that a four or five? Was it four? Yeah. And each of the readers, same content, same information, but there was a different level of vocabulary used, um, a different level of, um, help me out, text features, yeah.
Similar vocabulary, but, you know, easier read. So they can all get the same vocabulary to build their vocabulary, but they all have a little easier to read as they move in. Just a little bit easier.
Yep.
Um, but they all get introduced to the same vocab.
And now the kids can sit around, you know, around here and, yeah, read it and then have a conversation with the same content, and reading the same material.
Nobody is noticing.
Yep, different leg style level.
That's what it is, it's like.
So what happens to the leveled reading libraries that the schools have been developing?
And we still have those and children use them for, um, additional reading, like taking home and reading in their classrooms when they have time to read and we, we judge at different levels and not judge those type of, and provide them with a lot of variety. Most reading. I mean, it might not be as used as frequently, but I'm not sure. I think that the K through three right now is using them quite a bit. A higher level is using them for book clubs and paired readings and things like that. What will happen to those when we start wonders? Well, often enough, the children to read, you know, they need to be reading more than just a reading program. Um, they're reading to learn how to read that program, but there's more books. Even, even the, the wonders offers a, a classroom library.
Right.
But, um, I don't know how that's gonna go.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Middle school too, here we go.
So I didn't ask the last group, but if you can identify yourself, that's great. I should've asked the last and I apologize.
Sure. I know, I see that. I always remember people's faces, but I'm like, ah, a lady in school.
Well, it's like, I feel like I know, but not people maybe one.
I'm Patty Boisserie, I teach sixth grade. Um, and also from sixth grade on this committee was Betty Adams. And I'm Heather Hannah, I teach seventh grade. And we also had an eighth grade teacher, Brendan Healy. So we had all the middle school represented. Um, so our choice is Amplify and I think Tanya has.
I just gave it to her.
Oh, alright.
I had one for each side, so if they, if you guys could look at that and then pass it along.
It just gives you a little bit of alert. So we went into this, um, thinking that we needed to piggyback off of whatever the elementary chose or we needed to piggyback off of what the high school decided on. And because we wanted to have consistency either from K through five and then into middle school or starting with middle school and moving into high school. And as we started looking at the programs, one of the things that we noticed was middle school is an afterthought for the K through five programs or they were not on for the high school programs. And that bothered us as middle school teachers because, um, we really feel strongly about this age group that these three years are really important to kids because it's a make it or break it time for them. And we didn't want a program that was an afterthought. And we started looking through all of the materials and the materials where they were adding on six, seven and eight, it did seem like it was an afterthought. It was either bumping up the elementary program a little bit to make it more challenging for middle school or it was watering down the high school program to give an add-on for middle school. So when we came across Amplify and we knew that this was made by middle school teachers, specifically with middle school students in mind, that really piqued our interest. And as we started digging further into the materials, we realized that middle schoolers would be so excited by this program because we were so excited by this program. Um, it really takes everything that we know about middle schoolers and their interests and things that they think are boring, which is mostly reading at this age, and finds a way to hook them and also keep them engaged throughout. So for example, one of the programs that we looked at that we were really interested in and it was high on our list, even though it wasn't a middle school program, um, had them reading a novel in an, in a twelve-week unit. And it was basically reading three chapters of the novel every day and answering questions. And we know that middle schoolers hate that. They find it boring, they check out and it, they don't make progress that way. We need them reading and we need them engaged for them to make progress. And that's the big difference between the other programs and Amplify. Um, just the way that they present the text to middle schoolers, it's in small chunks. There are video hooks for them to get them engaged and interested in the topics. It takes a lot of different texts and puts them together. Um, so fiction paired with nonfiction within a unit. So they may be reading, um, a memoir about Roald Dahl and his life. And suddenly they're also reading a nonfiction piece about Tony Hawk and his skateboarding. So these things that will really interest middle schoolers. Um, besides the fact that we felt it was perfect for middle schoolers and basically tailor-made for middle, middle schoolers, um, it scored very strongly on Ed reports. So it has, like Chanice said, it has the bells and whistles, but they're very intentional. And, but middle schoolers really like bells and whistles also. If you have a middle schooler, you know that. Um, they want to be engaged with the text and they wanna be engaged with each other. And that's one of the things that this program provides. Um, it also takes into account the developmental needs of middle schoolers. So we have a wide range of abilities in middle school, entering sixth grade and all the way, and going all the way through eight. And before, you know, up to this point, we feel that we have some good things in place for students who are struggling. Um, and maybe a little bit more slotty for students who are advanced. And this program addresses both ends of that spectrum. Um, so we were excited about that, that we were gonna be able to really engage our advanced students as well as help struggling students. Um, it does use multiple multimedia approach, so they will have, you know, be using their Chromebooks. Um, but it also has, um, a, a huge writing component that is linked with all of the text that they read. And when we looked through, a lot of the writing that they were doing are things that we're doing right now, but a lot of it is in isolation. All of this is in connection with text, which was really exciting for us. So, um, next slide, something, some things that we're excited about in our need for this program. So some of the things when we looked at this that we were really excited about were, um, the ease of differentiating materials for different learners and readers. So, and it's literally like on an online platform, looking at how the students are doing and making a change like right then and there, rather than us having to figure out who needs what, then go find it online, print it out or scan copies and get it out to them. It's, it was like a, literally like click and, and drag and differentiate who's getting what at what level to meet their individual needs, which that's, that's your truth, because it's not easy. Um, there's also a lot of, um, social and emotional learning embedded in this program, um, into the lessons, uh, to teach, you know, a variety of different cultures, uh, different types of people, different ways of life that, um, maybe our students don't have exposure to at home or in, in town. Um, but they get this through the literature to kind of, uh, build that background knowledge for them so that they can apply it when they get to the high school level. Um, the text focused on topics and themes that are relevant for middle schoolers. Um, things that they can identify with, um, that will pique their interest hopefully and that they can apply to real-life situations. Um, also the vocab building activities that are embedded in every lesson. Um, there's a need for vocab in the middle school to continue to develop, you know, not only, um, higher level vocabulary, but also academic vocabulary. We need them to understand what they're being asked so that they can respond thoughtfully to it. Um, there's also the grammar practice that's embedded in the units to continue to focus on these basic things that they need throughout the middle school career into high school so they're prepared. Um, this program also has an online library of over six hundred and fifty fiction and nonfiction titles. So, um, it provides us with that independent reading or to find reading that would go along with what we're teaching, um, in a lesson. It also provides, um, you know, some of those struggling readers, we can identify texts that would be better suited for them, but also for the higher level kids that we have them as a focus because sometimes they get left behind. So those are things that we're extremely excited about. And then, um, some of the needs that we were discussing when we took a look at Amplify is that, um, it's grade six through eight comprehensive, it's a comprehensive program for the ELA that covers all the math standards. Um, it has a variety of texts, a variety of genres, um, and it's all thoughtfully put together. It, it makes sense, the units that they put in there and they are, I mean, when you look at some of the examples of what a unit would look like, it's, it's rigorous, like there is a lot involved in typically on text. Um, it's not just read a text, answer a couple of questions, here's a vocab or match up, you know, definition. It, it's more, um, analytic than just rigorously state information. I mean, that's kind of what we're looking for here, more rigorous, um, content or text for them. Um, we also need it to be consistent and challenging. This program, um, is gonna be used six through eight, but to, every year raise the bar as to what the expectation is. It's, it is a pretty rigorous, um, program, which is something we wanted and it's, I mean, we don't want the kids to be mediocre, they need to be pushed and challenged to reach, uh, a high expectation and get them ready for high school. Um, and with the materials that we, we looked at, we need them to, we need something to keep them engaged. We have, we're one-to-one, which is great. Um, but also now you're relying totally on teachers and staff to come up with all these, um, resources to utilize the online platform. And this has everything there already, um, also in textbook form, but on the online form, uh, online platform. And we're, as the teachers, are able to track them like right then and there. How did they do on this assessment? Okay, looking at that, what do I need to review tomorrow? Do I need to put these kids into small groups and revisit a topic? Um, where it's not take all that information, look at it at home, then plan out what I'm gonna do the next day. It can, it could be done right.
Eric. So, I don't wanna say this the wrong way, but, um, would it be wrong to assume that we're going to have an ELA block for sixth grade since this is six to eight? Cause this is, it looks like exciting curriculum for ELA, but how would it tie into our humanities for sixth grade?
I can speak to that. We've, we've been doing a lot of work, yeah, we've been, we've been doing a lot of work on that now. Um, and so we've had a few different conversations. Uh, we've spoken with our friends at ANET that worked through this process with us to cast their net to see, um, sixth grade humanities is not an uncommon, you know, structure, um, to see if there's anyone using Amplify that's done that. Um, and we have some follow-up conversations with Amplify that actually, there's quite a bit of, um, social studies, literature, and Tanya and me can speak to the literature specifically, that's actually anchored into the sixth grade, not just the sixth grade, but, um, when I review the material, you can see through six, seven and eight, um, across all grade levels. But what we're going to be doing is looking at the standards, skills and concepts that the kids have to learn in sixth grade history. We're going to match them up with what's already there and then we're gonna fill the gaps with what we need so that we can use this as the anchor.
Because I, and as exciting as they're making it sound and as it looks here, I would hate for sixth grade to get a shortened version because they're trying to intertwine history into it. And just looking, I mean, maybe this isn't, maybe this is really just an example, but just looking at the year at a glance, the, it says grade six, um, the Greeks, I might be wrong, but I think that's a grade seven history curriculum here. So I, I feel like, you know what I mean, but I, I would hate for sixth graders not to get this full delivery. And if we're that excited about an ELA curriculum, I, I don't know how it gets rolled out to a sixth grade where we don't offer ELA.
So we would, we would actually offer the program in its entirety and we'd fill the gaps that we have to fill. Because we do, yes, with the history, because we do have a humanities block. We just, we just can't have all four courses split up that way.
But you talked about too, looking at the history curriculum and frameworks too, that maybe things need to be shifted. I mean, I've taught Greeks, but it doesn't have to be seventh grade, you know what I mean? That can be moved around to fit the needs of the program and the students, so they get the best out of the program.
So did you all do, uh, test some lesson plans from this or no?
We chose to, um, hold off on that even though we have online access to Amplify right now only because, um, MCAS comes pretty early for us. And we didn't want to disrupt everything, you know, just to test the lessons. But we all have already gone into the program to investigate and test things out sort of on our own. Um, and what we've seen, you know, we really like, um, just from the online component. Um, the other benefit of the online part is that anything that's online can also be printed out. So you don't have to rely on just having everything on a Chromebook. You can print out anything that's on the screen and hand it out to students at any time, which I liked too because sometimes you just want to have a piece of paper in front of them rather than a screen. And you, you know, you don't wanna change it up a little bit, you don't always wanna have them in front of a screen. Um, some of the changes, when we started talking about this, we were thinking, this is gonna be a shift for not only us, but also for parents of middle schoolers. And, um, one of the changes is the work is going to be challenging for them. So initially, um, especially because I teach sixth grade and I'm always used to the transition from fifth into sixth. And if we don't have the same program as K through five, that's gonna be a transition. So we've already started talking about having conversations with the elementary school, with fifth grade teachers and sort of having a, a language match between their program and our program. Kids have to do it anyway when they come into sixth grade. Um, and we're pretty aware of the language that's used, um, referring to literature and parts of literature that they use in fifth grade. And we always shift them to more sophisticated language when they get to sixth grade. So we just need to be more aware of it when we start so that when the kids come to us and they're used to, you know, a certain way of referring to something in literature, we want them to know that, oh, well now you refer to it this way, well, this is another way to refer to it and then start building that. Um, we really are interested in the differentiated assignments and what Heather said about, um, literally being able to differentiate at the click of a button. Because the program is constantly, um, gaining and organizing data about student progress. It's constantly tracking. You can really see mid lesson, who is struggling, who needs more challenging work. And based on that data that you get, you can change things for just an individual student mid lesson or for the whole class, if you decide that's what you need to do mid lesson. or for the whole class, if you decide that's what you need to do mid-lesson. So I think just having that differentiation is going to be really interesting and exciting for us, for kids, and for parents. Progress in reading and writing is going to be continuously tracked, so it's not going to be waiting for a STAR report. It's not going to be waiting for progress reports, or end of, you know, report cards to see how kids are doing. It's going to be a daily tracking of student progress, and where we need to kind of fill the gaps for students, or where we need to challenge them. And for the kids, they're going to get so much more feedback, and also faster feedback on how they're doing. They're going to know day-to-day how they're doing as far as the assignments, the standards, the writing. The feedback is almost immediate, it comes from us, to the point where it even tracks how much feedback we give to individual students. So I know that that's something that I'm always aware of, you know, have I checked in with this person this week, or am I missing someone? The program actually tracks that for you, so you know that no one is falling through the cracks, and I would really like that piece of it, because I just think it's a benefit to the kids to know more often how they're doing in relation to the work.
Anybody else? Tim.
So, thank you, Panna, for answering my print question. That was my first question. So, with that in mind, I think, is the intent that you, that all teachers will print, like, so the research is very clear, that students are not learning at the same level, reading on the computer than they are holding a book or holding paper. And so, is that, I'm hoping that that is part of what we're going to do, if we get this program, is continue that. Because on the computer, does it allow, in that program, does it allow students to annotate or highlight, or use those skills right within the program?
Yeah. It actually reads back to them, and I just, like, part of the purchase is a blended program, where you get the print materials and the online. So the teachers aren't happy, like, it will already all be printed, they didn't necessarily have to print out one page at a time.
Yeah. We'll have both. So you have a print copy?
Yeah.
The kids will each have a print copy, like a reusable?
Yeah. It's consumable.
Yeah, that was one of the things that we had looked at too, because that's a concern that we have with online reading, is that, you know, we teach the kids to annotate and highlight, and, you know, make, keep track of their reading, and when they're online, they can't do it, but this program actually has that, the ability to highlight, the ability to annotate. Actually, they have.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks, their assessors look like they see on MCAS, and they have the same function that they have available.
Actually, probably more than.
It's more, because if the student chooses, they can have the whole text write to them at lab. The vocab's right there, that it will pronounce the words for them, when they click on the word, the definition will pop up, so they don't have to look into the words.
Can you shut off access to the reading, if you want to actually assess reading comprehension?
The other thing that we were impressed.
At the same time as you want to allow it.
Yeah, sometimes. We were really impressed with Amplify, because they send the updates continuously to the program, so it's not like buying a set of textbooks, and then you're stuck with them for five.
And get supplements.
Or more years, or, yeah, they send the supplements out. Amplify is constantly receiving feedback from the teachers, middle school teachers who are using it, and they make the changes instantaneously in the program, so you don't have to buy something else, or buy an upgrade. Once you've purchased everything, if they make any upgrades to the program, you get the upgrades immediately. You don't have to wait till the end of the year, you don't have to wait, you know, until they are going to roll it out. It's just instantaneous into the program, which I thought that was amazing.
That's amazing.
Yeah. So it's a big bang for your buck, I think, to get that.
For the new cover, nothing changed.
Will this, is it available, the reading pieces, or actually, I guess the whole thing, is it available without internet for our kiddos that don't have internet at home?
Yeah, because it comes with.
Will they be able to, like, download?
It comes with, no, it comes with the full print.
So they get both?
They get both.
And then, has Jill PG looked at this for our subgroups?
Our coach, Jenica, yeah, our special education coaches, looked at all three programs that you're all hearing this evening before we brought them forward.
And for ELL as well?
Yes. The one, this program actually has an ELL component built.
Yes.
Yeah, so does.
This one does too, okay. Those are my questions, thanks. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks later. And our high school crew.
Not a room to write about that, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a teacher at a high school, I currently am teaching ninth, tenth, and eighth grade, but those changes.
And I'm Hillary Roberts, I also am a teacher at a high school, and I teach currently tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, and again, also in the top three. So we chose StudySync for our program, to kind of bring in, and just like the others, we looked through a couple, we were between StudySync and MyPerspectives, but StudySync was like our strongest candidate by far. MyPerspectives really ended up being kind of like in the background by the end of this. So with StudySync, some reasons why we chose it. One, you guys can all look at that grid that Tonya provided, and it actually scored nearly perfect in every single category. The biggest one for us was probably the text quality, because looking at that Johns Hopkins report, the rigor of the text that we were providing our students was one of the biggest questions that we had, especially with MCAS now changing, so now we're facing that next-gen MCAS. Our students are really expected to meet a higher standard, and we need to be preparing them for that as soon as they hit the ground running in high school with ninth grade. With that, it's also directly connected to our math standards. So every lesson, every skill that our students are going to be able to complete during this curriculum, everything is connected to that curriculum, to the math standards, that was really important for us as well. There's a greater focus, and very similar to what the middle school was mentioning, there's a greater focus on excerpts, so shorter pieces, but those shorter pieces are actually more rigorous. They're asking our students to do more challenging tasks, that again, are connected to those standards. So it kind of makes the text a little bit more accessible to all of our students, instead of, here, with a 400-page novel, enjoy. It's a little bit more accessible, probably also a little bit more enjoyable for our students as well, they can get into the text a little bit more. And there's a much greater focus on skills, so it's no longer we're teaching a student to understand the book, we're teaching them to dig into that text, to really grapple with different skills, citing textual evidence that will support a claim that they're trying to make. So everything is much more skills-based, which is going to be not just applicable for the English classroom, but when they go to a history class, and they have to analyze a text, they're going to be better able to do that, because they have these skills that we're building upon. Each unit that is provided has options in StudySync, so there's thematic options, thematic units, but there's also novel studies that we can do. So each year, we can actually kind of change what we're doing. If one year, we want to do a novel study for our unit one, well, the next year, our students are going to get a different, a different text that they're going to look at, or they're going to get a thematic unit instead. So there's a lot of options that go along with that. Each unit also has a scaffolded writing project, and they're not all the same, so each writing project is actually asking our students to complete a different form of writing, whether that's going to be persuasive writing, or informative writing, or argumentative writing. So they're really going to be able to attack any writing tasks that they're asked to complete, whether that's on MCAS, whether that's on SATs, or in other classes that they have. And then the last thing, it's teacher-tested, a lot of the materials, not all of the materials are actually created by teachers. And we got a good taste of that when we went to Salem last, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, we went to Salem High School, and we got to see this curriculum in action, and how students were using it. And it was actually really nice to see, because at Salem, this was their first year of bringing in as well, so we got to kind of see some of the challenges that we might encounter next year. We had a debrief where we were able to ask them questions about the challenges that they were facing, to help us prepare for those ahead of time. So being able to kind of see it in action was really helpful for us on Tuesday, and we'll talk a little bit more about that.
So as you can tell, we're really excited about this program as well. Again, it also meets students exactly where they're at, there's a wide range of levels. So again, same text, but if I have an L, right, like I do right now with my honors night, I can give them the same text, but have, you know, the sentence frames and the other supports that they need to access that text, all the way up to my gifted students, who can, you know, access the advanced or the beyond advanced levels, so that way, again, they're getting the challenge that they need in our mixed classes. The online platform is very easy to use, that was one of the things that drew us to this, very user-friendly, compatible with Google Classroom, which we use a lot, so our students are already familiar with that, this pairs nicely with that. A nice blended learning environment aspect, where, you know, we're starting to do more with our iExcel data and iSTAR data, we're able to see, okay, I need to call these students and do some, you know, directed group work. This allows for that blended learning, where I can have students on StudySync working on separate assignments, while I'm calling students to do more directed teaching. Variety of text options, so again, as Hillary mentioned, you know, there's the theme-based options, as well as the anchor option, and that just allows for a lot more choice for our students. So, you know, maybe I'm going to teach, you know, whole group a couple of those paratext, but then the remaining I can present to my students too for choice, right? So they can choose, you know, I really want to dig deeper in this area, I can pursue that. And again, with the access to the over the 300 full novels, there's, that's actually just maybe half of what they have lessons for, but we actually have access to the 300 full novels, so again, lots of choice moving forward. We chose this, we chose it because we were excited about those aspects, it also fits really nicely with the needs that we have. So again, with that increased rigor, we really are preparing our students for both college and career. We do need to keep raising the bar, and this program does that very nicely. There is, again, with the ed reports, we see that the research-based findings show that it will produce the results that we need to get them there. Also, again, with the MCAS and the next generation, everything is pushing them further, and these texts, the challenge of these texts will help us meet those, meet those standards. And then lastly, another great component is that it is consistent, ninth through 12, so they'll come in with ninth grade, and they'll continue that throughout their high school career. And so, they'll be familiar with it, they'll be familiar with the rigor, and it'll just keep pushing them throughout each year.
And kind of picking back off of that, especially after hearing Amplify with the middle school, while they're two different programs, they're actually very, very similar. So a lot of what was mentioned in terms of like what the students will be doing, what they're able to do with annotating on the screen, and when you're looking at MCAS and how it's changed now, what students are able to do with MCAS, they can create a split screen, so they see the text, they can annotate, they have the questions, the same exact thing. It's almost a mirror image when it comes to what you're seeing with some of the things that you're able to do with the tools on StudySync. So when we're thinking of our ninth and our tenth graders, and getting them used to like that format of taking a test in that way, it provides the same exact, like, mirror image for them, which is great. So some of the things that our students might encounter, a new login site, but it's compatible with Google Classroom, so, and it's very easy to access, very easy to use, which is great. The increased rigor thing is actually probably the biggest change that they'll face. So it's going to be more challenging for them, definitely by far. The things that we might be asking them to do in terms of like really digging into a text and looking at those skills, is going to be another thing that kind of goes along with that increased rigor. But with that being said, with that rigor, it's not just a, here you go, here's a harder text, good luck, you're on your own. This program, I find, and I think we can agree, the differentiation and the scaffolds that are provided, whether that's for, you know, changing lexiile levels for different students with a click of a button, we can do that, different languages, we can provide the scaffold with the sentence starters, all of that is available to us. The wider range and variety of the texts, so they have access to that whole library, so even if it's not a text that we're doing in the classroom, they're also able to access those texts if they want to read it on their own. There's a lot of more modern, contemporary texts that are available to them there, which is great to see, especially with some of the, you know, nonfiction and fiction pieces. So they're getting more contemporary writers, different kinds of writers that they necessarily didn't have access to, so both men and women, they're going to see both for authors, they're going to see different cultures, different ethnicities, all of that is going to be available to them through these texts.
They can see themselves.
And then, individualized assignments. So like I said before, you're able to kind of change the lexiile levels for different students, depending on their level. If they're an L, there's different languages that are available as well, especially if, you know, we've had kids come into our classrooms that don't speak any English. So giving them those like step-by-step scaffolds, that really kind of integrate them, but also keep them engaged with what the rest of the class is doing, all of that is available to us.
Erin? I think we're going to go. What is the current high school ELA curriculum?
It varies, so like in, you know, fresh, their freshman year, they have elements of literature, it's a textbook, so each year, there's a different textbook. When they get to junior, senior year, there's, we're teaching the AP courses in addition to electives, so those have a whole different, so it's been kind of all over the place in a sense, and that's another thing that we're so excited about with this, is that it will help us be more consistent, so then what we start building in ninth will then will build off of that intent, that it will be more consistent.
Similar to the middle school, is there an opportunity for text in a hand?
Yes, exactly, online and textbook.
But what about a book? Can I read Of Myson Men as a book?
Yes.
Or do I have to read?
Thank you, Jane. I was like, do I have to read?
It's a Myson Men. It actually.
Well, I don't know, we can debate that.
There's a place for, there's a place for the classics.
Yeah.
And when you get to college, they expect you to know the classics.
So that's actually a perfect example. So we currently teach Of Myson Men in 11th grade, is it 11th?
12th.
Yeah, 11th, 12th, and they actually bump a touch on for it, for screen, ninth, ninth, freshman year.
But that's a point of a text complexity, and my son is doing it in eighth.
Yeah.
Right, so like we've really, I'm so glad you mentioned the text complexity, reading the whole novel.
Something that was really nice too, is that as we were going through a lot of the curriculum and the novels that they included in the units and the thematic units, we have a lot of them already.
Yeah.
Many of them, so like, you know, Of Myson Men, all of those classics, we have all of those on hand already, which is great, we don't have to like pay extra for that.
Right, in addition to online.
I mean, to Jason's point, you know, The Little Prince is, can be read to five-year-olds, but when you teach it as a senior, when a good teacher teaches it in a senior English class, you're well above the complexity of what you're reading to your six-year-old, right?
Right.
And so, I think, I just hope, I get very nervous, Hillary has had my daughter for many years over her course of time at BMR. I like when I see her reading a book.
Oh, yeah.
Like, a true book, and she's off that screen.
Yep.
That has a million and one distractions. So one of, one of my, like, worries about almost everything we heard today is how much screen time we are forcing on these kids, and they're, and many of them will choose that, even if it's not the best mode, so that is my, like, overall concern, because YouTube is a clip away.
Yes, absolutely.
So for me, I just, I hope that we, at our high school, continue to.
Put a book in the hand.
Hold a book.
Right.
And teach the classics, because the reality is, that, I mean, we do kite runner at my high school, and, you know, when, when kids go to college, they'll email me and say, do you mind sharing those notes, we're doing this in my, you know, college 202 course? And I'm like, oh, I think you should have taken your own, you know, so there's a place for that, to prepare them for, for post-secondary school.
I have a funny feeling you don't say that, though.
I do.
I'm meaner than I look.
So to touch on that, I'm actually, the lesson that I did, I actually did it today, and we don't have access, you know, for the students to get online yet, so I did print the lesson, the study six lesson, and we are doing To Kill a Mockingbird, you know, that is right where, you know, in the curriculum. And so, you know, we're definitely still in the novel, still doing close reads, they were annotating and analyzing the text with that printout, so we're definitely still doing print.
And with the book in their hands, because my chat, type her book the whole week.
And I think, that was actually probably something that was important to us too, we didn't want the screen in front of them the whole time, I think we both feel like, you know, I like having a physical book in person too. But this, not, not only with like holding a book in hand, but StudySync also provides lesson plans that are off-screen. So not everything is just, here, you're doing this on screen, you're doing this on screen. It provides a lot of collaborative activities for the students to do, for us to do with the whole class as well.
And, and like the others, it assesses as they go?
Yes, so we haven't had a chance to get into those details, but there's absolutely an assessment component.
And adjust as you go as well.
Yes, exactly. So we're meeting students at the level that they can.
May I ask a question to the middle school folks?
No.
Well, StudySync says that it's six to 12. So StudySync apparently is part of the same publisher of Wonders, correct?
Yes, it is.
And so in the Wonders research resource thing, it indicates that Wonders slides smoothly, this is the one you didn't have, they, they were short.
Oh, it's right there.
Smoothly into StudySync six through 12. But interestingly, we, is this part of the ones that you said it seemed like it was piecemeal at the middle school level?
Yeah.
They did look into StudyStink, StudyStink?
That's how they felt about it, too. Sorry, Tanya, couldn't.
No, I actually, because when they came and presented, the sales reps came and I sat in with the high school, I actually went back to the middle school teachers. I actually went back to the middle school teachers and said to them, maybe we should relook.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's okay. I actually said.
I'm trying to make contact.
After I sat in on the, the presentation about more about StudySync, I went back to the middle school staff and said, maybe we should relook, because it was really, we looked at it one way.
Sure.
And after the presentation, another way. So they, we, the middle school teachers actually went back and relooked at it, but it still didn't do for middle.
So this was one of the programs that they thought that middle school was an afterthought?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I wasn't sure, I figured that's what it was, but.
I think, I mean, when we looked at it and saw what they see, it's definitely great for the high school, but it just wouldn't meet the needs of the middle school where it's often, because the way they. Because initially, that's really, you know, kind of what we wanted, like, like from K to 12.
I mean, when you do that with the same publisher, there tends to be a lot less wrinkles to iron out, and I, and Jason doesn't like the word supplement, but when you break the chain, you tend to have to supplement somewhere, and I know that is not a word you like when we talk about curriculum.
I also know that there's no one curriculum that could cover everyone.
Nothing's perfect.
K through 12.
Yeah, nothing's perfect.
K through 12, come on.
We would all have it by now if that were the case. Right?
Right, assume.
Dr. Jappel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our connection with Anet is still that, I think Cory's work is to help us connect each of these programs.
It's a, I mean, it's a good segue, a lot of the questions.
You asked to the final slide.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, wait, we have one more question.
No, we have another question. I just want to, with what they said about the online, and I just, what comes back to me is, two years ago, three years ago, maybe even four years ago, when we were sitting here, and, oh my God, MCAS Park was going to be online, the new MCAS is online, our kids aren't ready for this. So sadly, it's here, and this seems like it's going to.
Aid the facilitation.
Correct. So as much as I like the book in front of, of myself and my kids, too, I feel like this is something, hopefully it can be.
So I'm going to jump on that real quick.
Jump.
And feel like there's a balance. I feel like, so I was going to make a comment to all of the programs, and just with the wonderment of how are we creating lifelong readers? And I think we're creating good test takers. I think we have an amazing scope and sequence for all the stuff that has been presented tonight, which I think is going to bring cohesiveness across the district. But the end result is that in Portrait of a Graduate, I'm sure we'll speak to this.
Yes.
Is that we need to create lifelong readers, which means they need novels. So, oh, you were going to teach them inferencing, we're going to teach them all the skills, but can a, can a student leave elementary school knowing what they like to read? Can a student leave middle school knowing what they like to read? And I worry when we go with programs, and I think the programs are going to be perfect, don't get me wrong, because we do need a scope and sequence, and we do need consistency, absolutely. And I'm excited to see that. But I also think there's room for knowledge and novels and long texts, because students need to build stamina, students need to have books in front of them, and I only saw that in the Studies, I only saw that in yours, but it might be because I missed it, but I do think that there needs to be some type of committee work, building novels within these texts, because in a few years, we're going to say, okay, now what? And I think, how are we creating lifelong readers, K to 12, not just 12, but if it's built K to five, six to eight, when they get to 12, they should know what they like to read, they should be comfortable reading, and they should be ready for college. And I think that's where we need to go, and that's my fear with the programs, is that we will have them, you know, building inferences and, and doing all the reading components that are necessary, but in the end, we need to send them off lifelong readers. And I think that needs work. I think that's the end result, is of books, you know, long novels, and I think it's even a standard that they have to sit for, so they have to read for a certain amount of time and build their stamina.
But I would argue that there has to be a balance.
And I said, I said that, and I agree with you, Jay.
Absolutely, because, because someone who watched a child read novel after novel, after novel, refuses to pick up a book now.
Right, and that's what I, that's what I preface my whole conversation on, is there needs to be a balance. And I think there needs to be a balance with reading on paper and transitioning them on to the computer. I mean, we have to, we have to do that. I mean, but I think at the end, is how do we create lifelong readers, whether it's through one thing or another? And I'm glad that there's a scope and sequence, you know, so this consists.
And I think it'll be interesting as well with using such, these program things, in that teachers are going to have to find their way through it as well. How do you teach inferencing if everybody is reading sort of a different text online because you've changed the lexile within? And so you can't read a certain passage to say, here it is, because it might be different, what they, they change the wording in, in a lot of those differentiation. So if you're showing something on the board from one level and someone else is reading it, it'll be interesting to see how it all works from a teaching perspective. Because if you're, if you're, if you're, what, if your text isn't the same, which is what I'm hearing, when you click the button, the text changes, I mean, the, the message is the same, but the text isn't.
The message and the inference is the same. The inference is still the same.
But when you're teaching inferencing and you're, and you're reading through a paragraph together to say, what's the author's purpose, and it's not the same, I, I, I think that's going to be a learning curve for teachers.
But that's what, that's when you bring in small groups, instruction, and you're not, it's not whole class. So if you take this group, this is, and you're still doing the same.
And then you have your roofer's and your cardinal's, and then that becomes another challenge for teachers to, to, to get through that, and how do you do that nicely?
And I can tell you how we do it. I can tell you how we've learned it, but, but that's another conversation.
I think just in summary before Tanya talked about the next steps, which could quickly, I think the idea is that we have really smart teachers that are doing really good things, and we want them to be spending their time adapting the material and preparing the lessons for the kids in front of them, not finding stuff. That was something I heard a lot from our teachers, that they're spending a tremendous amount of time, and I know we read about that, too, in the Johns Hopkins report, and the teachers gave us that feedback. And so, you know, I think the idea here is that teachers will look at the, Tanya, we'll get to a second, these kind of must-dos of each program, so there's consistency and alignment. And then there are these options, these can-dos, that they can do in addition to that, but giving them an opportunity to kind of find their way through some of that stuff, and really hone their craft and use their craft to design the materials for the kids in front of them. I think that's what we're really looking to do with that.
So some of the questions you had asked as they were presenting, actually, we're in our next step slides, because as I said, we were presenting in front of you, but it's, it's not the end of our journey, it's not the end of the work of this team, we're kind of in the middle of it. So with a lot of these programs, there were so many different things to do that we all really felt that we need to decide as a district, what are going to be the must-dos that every teacher has to do, so that there's the same experience for all the students with, through the grades? And then what are some options, some can-dos, that the student, that the teacher can choose to do beyond the must-do? And then Jason did share with you about aligning the work with the Empowering Writers and the Wonders that he's working on, creating a professional learning community. We've one or two other districts that is already doing that work. And then we're also going to work on bridging the, the three programs. So like Patty had said, what are, what is the academic vocabulary in Wonders, and is it different in the wording in Amplify, and making sure that we're using those same things? As, and the same thing for the eighth-grade teachers, using that academic vocabulary for the StudySync. And then creating an entire scope and sequence, K to 12, so everyone, we have exactly what everyone is doing. And then with all the other things you can do with the programs, is there's so many different types and choices for assessments. So which assessments will each person do at the grade level? That's kind of the must-dos, and you still could do some of the can-dos of the different assessments. And then one of the questions was also about aligning the humanities work with the sixth grade, and that's actually something we're starting to look at secondary, because we did not want, the elementary has been learning so much new stuff. But the secondary level, we've already started conversations with the instructional coach in the history department within the high school, and looking at the history in the middle school, and what needs to be done. And so in the new history standards that came out, there's the grade bands, and so they said, here's the way that you could teach these topics, but in middle school, Sympath had to be in eighth grade, but in sixth and seventh grade, here's the standards, you can change them how you, how you wish. So we do currently have Greeks and Romans in seventh grade, but it doesn't have to be there according to vast, like you can switch them if you want to.
So will you, you have the teachers sit down and look at the program and decide what's best for what grade, or what works well?
Right, and we're going to work with, with Amplify to know more about that, as well as Cory helping us with that. And then the, some at the high school, looking at StudySync and making use of those materials to match the current course offerings, especially electives that they have in the eleventh and the 12th grade. So that, that's just next steps of the journey that we're on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all very much for your efforts that you put into this. I know this was additional work and time and energy, and, but it sounds like you really dug into it, so I know I'm talking to my back, but I do really appreciate the work that everyone put into it.
So the programs are, and this is probably a good segue to the next part, which is the budget, kind of the budget cleanup part of the conversation.
You're all done? Oh, sure.
So we've worked really very closely with each of the vendors on this, and essentially the cost breakdown is this. The elementary program is approximately $200,000. The middle school program is about $67,000. And the high school is about $65,000 for six, a six-year subscription.
Each, each or just high school?
Yeah, each subscription is six years.
Each level is six years.
Yes.
So $200,000.
For six years.
So if it gets updated?
Everything, we all get the updates. And, and in addition to that, they will allow us, each vendor, as confirmed it again, I checked three times, to pay in two, two installments in two fiscal years. So we can actually take the total, split it in half, pay half in FY '21 and half in FY '22 with no interest. And when you have a six-year program, paying it over two years with no interest is very helpful.
And usually that's the timeframe with programs, it's usually a six-year. A relook.
That's right.
Where are we within visions?
Six years. Yeah, this is our sixth year. Next year, we're at our sixth year. So it's a, so it's a large number, but it's a long time, and we can pay in two installments, and then in years, you know, the, the remaining four years, there's no cost. So the, the investment's upfront in a two-installment option. You can spread it out, but once you get beyond two years, there's interest. Yeah, you don't want to, we don't want to do that.
So $166,000.
That's right.
I did my math.
You did?
I didn't have.
You did it very fast. And that includes all the professional development.
$166,000.
Will they come back after the first couple of years and help with the, I don't know, refresher? You know, after three years, you kind of realize the, the ins and the outs and the gaps and what's missing, will the companies come back?
Yes.
And help navigate that?
We have five. The way we laid out, again, everything was tentative, because we weren't sure the direction which will be moving with budget and, you know, approval of, of the funds for this, but we have blocked in five full staff training days, actually starting by training our literacy committee, so we can actually have kind of lean learners, if you will, or train, yeah, train the trainers in each building. And so we would start that training pending approval very soon in April. We would use the May PD day to actually roll out a training to everybody. We would have an optional drop-in session over the summer, late July, once teachers have had an opportunity to kind of take everything home with them and take her around with it after their May training, and then use one of the professional development days in August for a full training. We would also then have, we've put on hold already the October and, or tentatively October and January and PD dates, if those remain the same, we may look at shifting those around moving forward, but if those remain the same for next year, and we have an option to do some coaching in between. I should also mention the coaches have been part of this, the site visits, including the special education coach, and will be part of the team that will be trained first, since they're our main teacher supports in the classrooms.
So 100% full rollout to, of all three programs on first aid school?
Yes.
There won't be a gap from?
Nope. We'd start that work right away.
Jason, so the committee, obviously the people who are on the literacy committee have looked at this and kind of dug a little deeper. Has the full staff at all the buildings, have, have, have they had a chance to give you or the committee input on their thoughts?
So we didn't do like a, yeah, we didn't do like a survey, you know, or anything along those lines, like we've done with science in the past, but I know the teachers have had a lot of conversations with their colleagues about it. I was able to attend, and I didn't attend the full sessions with the literacy committee and Tanya and Cory from Anet, but I was able to attend kind of pieces of those. I had a lot, a lot of conversation, Cory and Tanya between, and I met with each of the grade-span literacy groups, like the folks we saw tonight, and had one-on-one conversations with each one to get a good feel for kind of where they were, the conversations with their colleagues. And the overall gist is essentially what we have heard tonight, which is people are looking for the consistency and the structure to that, and I don't know if anyone wants to speak any different to that.
So I know that the elementary has spoken a, most of, a lot of people have left. But they have been super excited, and they've already started to share even beforehand. And then for secondary level, the, the people on the committee are almost all of the staff. So, you know, for middle school, it's only one other, two other teachers, but we've all, they've also going to be sharing, and we're going to see about test driving out to even the specialized teachers, so they can see what, what the program looks like. And then the high school, you saw almost everyone, too, because they only have four staff, so.
I mean, I, I think specialized has to, has to be trained in these things.
Absolutely.
Because if, if there's ever an area where you're piecing life together and trying to fill in the, the learning gaps, it is, special education is definitely, there's, because, because there's hardly anything that focuses just on students who are specialized.
Well, we're also looking to at, you know, the last meeting, or the meeting before, I don't recall, we looked at all the intervention materials and resources, like New Zealand LA and some, I, I don't know that we're going to need all those tools.
I was writing that down as we went. I was looking at.
Once we look at, well, truly, once we look at all the components that are there, we may be able to scale some of that back to.
I'm curious as to where Star is going to land. So I, I heard a lot of sort of undertones about Star during various pieces of tonight's presentation, so will that, is that a yearly subscription type thing?
We have one more year on our contract after this year, but I don't see any significant changes there, because that is our district-wide internal benchmarking system that we use.
Oh, that's.
So we need to have a common measure to.
I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah, I don't see that changing.
I didn't feel that vibe tonight in various things, but I do think that allows us to compare apples to apples and, you know, vice versa. Like this is going to give us other details, but for, you know, the first three years, it's really not going to potentially tell us a lot.
I think it will though. I think these programs have assessments built in that we are missing right now. So if they're built, if any of the programs, they're built in, so you'll be able to assess the students more often, which hopefully you'll be able to small group and reteach. So those STAR's numbers will increase. But I think the assessment.
Right, but I think you use the STAR, like your assessment in this program for the first year isn't going to say whether there's gains necessarily overall.
But it's based on the standard. So if we're still, I mean, even though the program, you're still doing inference, you're still doing main idea, you're still doing, so STAR's touching for those commonalities anyway. So I think you will see, I mean.
It should.
Should.
There is a grant available, we just can't take on anything else right now, but through the Department of Ed to do, to help districts do an internal assessment study. And, you know, I'm actually hopeful that they'll offer it again, maybe next year or the year after. We just can't do it right now. But it would be really good to get a deep look at that and to look at our assessment practices. I was going to say, these programs have ongoing formative assessment embedded in them, which helps the teachers drive the instruction and tweak the instruction to make sure that it's individualized for the kids, whereas the STAR falls back to more of that summative piece of making sure that we're at the big benchmarks.
Oh, you people use your fancy words.
Well, and at the high school, I just really, I really appreciate everybody's work on this. I do, the teachers have put a ton of time, effort and energy, so has Tanya. But I really appreciate something the high school teacher said, which is like the standard has changed. And, you know, the kids need to have more challenging material. Not necessarily different, right? Classics are the classics, but we need to be looking at that level of complexity through a different lens. And so it was just.
But I heard that all the way through. I mean, I heard that ability to challenge the gifted student, which I think is a piece we often just kind of put.
And I think that, I think no matter what program, there's going to be gaps, whether it's something special ed or it's going to be in the enrichment. What you do with those?
Sure.
So as a literacy commitment, do we, we need to make those decisions this evening before we go into.
So in our, in your second packet in your folder this evening is a additional PowerPoint. We don't have it for the overhead, which is fine, you all have it in front of you. But it basically is going to walk us through what Matt and I have been trying to kind of pull together in finalizing an FY '21 budget number, knowing that ultimately it's the committee's decision, of course. But we took kind of the best of what we could do, and Matt will walk us through this, knowing the limited revenue, actually the reduction in revenue, to be frank, that we're going to be seeing this year from the Department of Ed. Matt and I had a very frank conversation with them yesterday about particularly charter school numbers, because we are seeing an overall $200,000 reduction in funding from last year to this year, which is mind-boggling considering the billions of dollars that have been pumped into the educational system across the state. But that's the Student Opportunity Act, we've had a conversation before. And next meeting, I'll be presenting to the committee to approve our Student Opportunity Act plan, of which we had to write as a district because all the districts in the contract had to, for money we're not getting. In fact, we're getting a reduction in resources. So I don't really want to get started on that this evening, but be that as it may, Matt's going to actually kind of walk us through this and explain kind of where the literacy piece fits to your, exactly to your point, Jane. And we can just kind of unpack and process what we want to through what we've seen.
But we need to leave this evening with decisions about literacy. Am I correct in that?
Yes. Yep, and they're embedded in the numbers, so.
Okay.
Matt, I don't know if you want to.
What? It doesn't say anything for anything, but yeah.
But we can do it in the chatroom.
So if you, if you look at the package that's in your folder for the budget, Jason and I, as he mentioned, have been working on finalizing the numbers for FY '21. The first page you can see is some of the factors that have impacted the funding. At our next actual meeting, we'll have a comprehensive presentation on all of the numbers with some graphics and get a full explanation of where things stand with respect to every aspect of the budget. But we wanted to, in order to reinforce the fact that this literacy program is part of the numbers and to show where the numbers are right now, we wanted to give a quick overview of where we were with the actual numbers. So you can see the four major factors that impacted us this year. There was a huge, once again, rise in minimum local contributions. I believe Blackstone's, as you'll see in another point, is about 4.91%, and Millville's minimum local contribution rose over 5% for this year. That combined with a minimal Chapter 70 increase, which is just our $30 per student. We're not seeing, we're not seeing a lot of additional state support. But what we are seeing, as you noted in the two bottom bullets, are we've got significantly decreased charter school reimbursement and we have an increase in charter school tuition. So our charter school tuition went up approximately $80,000 to $90,000 and, or, I'm sorry, about $70,000, as Jason mentioned. The combined total is about $200,000 of a net loss. The reason for the decrease in the charter school reimbursement is that currently the state's new plan, as they're rolling out the Student Opportunity Act, they changed the reimbursement to 100% reimbursement for all students in year one, 60% reimbursement for students in year two at a charter school, and 40% reimbursement for students in year three. However, the way that the money is being packaged is that the state is giving a pot of money. And they will fully fund all of the 100% first. And then they will take what's left over and they will fund part of the 60%. And then as of right now, there isn't even enough money left over to fund any of the 40%. So when we look at our numbers specifically, last year, this year, I should say, is actually a huge year for us with respect to our 100%, but they just changed that. So we have about 30 some odd new.
Thirty, yeah, 35 total.
Charter students that started this year. Next year, they're going to be in that 60% bucket. However, the state is only funding 23% of the 60%. So we saw our money go from 400 some odd thousand dollars potential to about $110,000 reimbursement that we'll be seeing for FY '21. And we discussed this with Hadley Caroll yesterday, who oversees the charter school financing for the district, for the state.
Claimed there's no impact.
No, she was very, she was very upfront and saying, she said, we're aware. She said, unfortunately, that's the way that the state decided to put the money out there.
23%, I just, I stepped on the 23% of the 60%.
So that's where things, it's an excellent question. That's where things stand right now. As the, as the numbers go through the legislative process, they may allocate a larger pot and hole, so it may go up to 24 or 25% of the 60%.
But nothing.
I don't know. There's no sense that it's going to come anywhere close to 100% of the 60%.
So there's no fire behind that? Like are we, is the exception to the rule, are we getting hit harder than everybody else or is there another?
Because of our numbers, we happen to be getting hit exceptionally hard because we just started to lose our students. And this is the first year, this year, we have a ton that moved into 60% next year. However, that's the reality of it.
And the reality is the more they allow the charter schools to increase their enrollment, that's going to, that's not going to get better for us.
No.
Correct.
And we're looking at consistent increases in charter tuition for at least the next seven years, because every incoming kindergarten, since they opened it back up, there's going to be a new group. It won't be like last year. It's not going to be how it was. It's going to be, it's going to go off.
But the truth of the matter is, by the time the funding reaches the level that it's supposed to be at 100%, we're not going to be qualified for any of the funding anyway because it'll be past the three years.
And if I could, I have to, sorry, but I really hope parents are paying attention to the cutting-edge opportunities that we are trying to put in our classrooms for kids between reading programs, lab-based science programs, one-to-one technology, additional pathways through the middle school and high school for career opportunities. We are moving this district forward as fast as humanly possible. And so I really hope families, you know, that are watching see that and really, you know, stay the course because BMR is doing just some incredible work.
And to that end, we are trying to do it at very, very low cost. To the towns. That's exactly, correct. So if you look at the, at the next page, we originally presented three budgets. We presented our Level Services budget, which is the cost of providing just what we're doing this year at next year's rates. We also presented our Phase Two budget, which was our pie in the sky.
It was all the needs.
All the needs that we've identified. Well, we realized it was pie in the sky when we started speaking with the towns and understanding their restrictions and their limitations. That being said, it's still the things that we need to get the district to where it is supposed to be. But we, so we looked at our Phase Two budget and then we started scaling back and saying, okay, we've had these meetings now, we've had these budget workshops, what are the things that have been discussed? What has been identified that are our priorities that we need to keep in? And what are the things that we could potentially start eliminating and scaling back, as mentioned? Which brings us to that FY '21 working budget. As of now, that budget stands, our Level Services budget was a 2.5% increase over our total budget from last year, from, sorry, from this year. Our Phase Two budget was a 3.91% increase to this year's budget. And we have scaled back through reallocating funds and also identifying additional sources of funding, which we'll mention shortly. We've scaled that back to a 1.79% increase over this year's operating budget.
And that includes the literacy?
That includes the literacy with a caveat to how we're going to pay for that. So if you go to the next page, how are we scaling back from this fully funded Phase Two budget to what we're looking to get that we know we need to implement for next year? And clearly, as this evening's meeting shows, our literacy program is our number one priority for FY '21. And Dr. DeFalco and I and all of the leadership team have said, if we're going to focus our energies anywhere, it needs to be on this comprehensive literacy program. And quite frankly, we have added nothing, very little else.
Through the local budget.
Through the local budget, correct. If you look at the next page that has the changes to the Phase Two, we removed Planning, Teaching and Learning Coach, which we were hoping to get, that was going to be new for FY '21. We've taken that out of the plan. We removed a high school teacher that we were trying to put in for increased ELA interventions.
And less study halls.
And less study halls. We removed the two elementary specialists that we were trying to put in to balance the equity in the offerings across the elementary schools. We have reallocated the funds. And one of the things that was also extremely helpful, since the last time, we were able to identify a number of the faculty that are retiring. And that did create significant savings. So that was since factored into this working budget. So there were at least seven members of our faculty that will realize some savings through their retirement. And that brings us to the last point that Dr. DeFalco and I were briefly referencing, which is our intention with the permission of the committee and the towns, in order to not allow the burden of this new curriculum to impact the town's allocation, we are going to ask for use of E and D funds to fund that portion of the budget. Our E and D was just certified recently at $750,000.
$754, I think, yeah.
$754. So there is a, there is a significant amount of money that is there. Not that we don't have uses for it, because we do. As we've already discussed, the high school vestibule plan is going to be charged to E and D. We discussed the capital plan that's underway that will be charged to E and D. And this will be the third piece of that puzzle, which next school committee meeting, we'll be presenting a motion to actually authorize us, now that E and D has been certified, to use those funds for each one of these specific reasons. And I'll have a motion language drafted out so that it's clear. And then that needs to be presented to the boards of selectment of the towns. And they need to decide whether or not they're just going to allow us to use it as requested or if they think they need to bring it to some type of a vote. The hope is that, understanding that the purpose for us using it is to not charge the towns any additional funds for the FY '21 budget, our hope is that they will be sympathetic to our cause and say that they're just going to use it how we see fit. That's the hope. The total reduction, as you can see, from Phase Two to our current FY '21 working budget is $550,145. That brings us to what our current working number is, which is $26,405,152. And for those people that are listening at home, they're saying, what does that mean to me? So again, at the next, at the next meeting, we will thoroughly go through all of these numbers, but this is an overview to demonstrate where the literacy program fits in to the budget and how we're still looking to move forward. So what this means for the towns in FY '21, you can see the proposed assessments for both Blackstone and Millville. For Blackstone, I'll just read them off so people at home get to know what we're looking at. For Blackstone, the minimum local contribution is $6,91849. The exclusionary, which includes transportation minus the reimbursement that we get for transportation, for Blackstone, that's $1,08967. For the additional portion, it's $1,513205. And for the capital assessment for Blackstone is $331285. That brings them to a total assessment of $9,845306. And as part of that, as I mentioned, their MLC increased by 4.91% this year. And this is a total increase, entire package presented to Blackstone, where this is a 3.49% increase over this year's operating budget or total budget. I shouldn't say operating because it includes everything. For Millville, the minimum local contribution also went up 5.06%. They are expected to contribute at minimum the $2,288,515. The exclusionary number, the transportation portion, is $378,419. The additional is $529,734. And their capital assessment, which includes the new Millville-Boiler project for this coming year, is $137,977. Their capital, actually because of the reduction in amounts from last year, because every year we pay off more of the bonds, the payments are a little bit less, the introduction for next year of the new loan only increased their capital by like $1,000. So they saw very minimal change. So that's a good piece for people to know that even with the introduction of the Boiler project for next year, their capital didn't go up. Their total being $3,334,645. And that represents a total increase of only 1.36% to the town of Millville from their total assessment last year. I know, we know that the assessment percentages don't work out to be the same. That's because. That's because of the percentages that, of the regional agreement that everyone is committed to. And actually, Millville's percentage went down this year. So it did decrease somewhat.
Because of student population.
Because of student population, correct.
Sometimes people forget that piece.
I apologize, yes. The percentages are always based on actual student population.
And truly, and I think the town, the town representatives are starting to understand this. I'm not sure the community does. But it's the minimal local contribution that we have no control over that is really driving this request of the community. Because if you look at the additional pieces, the school committee, through even transportation, additional capital costs, are only asking for an additional 0.003% from last year.
If I may, yeah.
Yeah.
If you do all the numbers, from Millville, their total increase is $44,626 over last year. And the minimum local contribution went up 110 grand. So we've decreased.
We've decreased, exactly. That's where I'm going.
And in Blackstone, the difference is less than $10,000 that we've increased.
Yeah.
So it's majority minimal local contribution is effective, bottom line.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, so I think it's a shame that the state has a 2.5% issue and yet increases the demand on the communities at a greater level. And it seems as if the school is doing that ask and we are essentially asking very minimal. Jack and I are doing the same math that we're here in.
Yes.
Yeah.
What we control asks less from Millville.
Correct.
We don't control the state.
So what this represents is this year's design with the additional one-to-one technology at the elementary level with our literacy program coming from E and D. And then the other-
The whole amount? Sorry, I don't think that that was-
The half, the 50%.
Half, 167.
That whole amount of what's being funded.
It's budgeted at 167. And that's what we will ask to have come from E and D.
157?
167.
And then everything else we're doing regarding the career development work, we're writing grants like crazy, to be frank.
There's still a little bit, though, like that district.
I think it was $10,000, yeah, for the Project Lead the Way. Yeah, you're right, it was small.
But, all right, I thought it was on-
Yeah, we have $10,000 in the budget for the Project Lead the Way.
And then we got $70,000 for grants. 100, we put a, we put $100,000 proposal into our legislators for the Blackstone Valley Collaborative. We put $100,000 grant into ASA for the middle school career exploration.
And we've also been working with some of our legislators to hopefully get some additional funding that might offset the costs that we've already planned on spending from E and D.
The safety vest.
But we're gonna see where that ends up.
For the safety.
We're hoping, yeah, we're hoping to see some additional funds come in for the safety vestibule at the high school.
So the vestibule is 50 and the capital project is 50?
So the vestibule is going to probably end up being closer to between 55 and 60 with designer fees incorporated. And the capital plan came out to about $43,750. So they offset each other for the most part, but maybe a slight increase to the total, like $1,000 or so.
So that would bring our E and D down to?
Less than $500,000.
Yep.
Yeah, boy. Which is a concern.
Very consistent on him.
I mean, just under, but we've been pretty consistent with using or under five. Right? We've never been above five.
Yeah.
Maybe one, maybe.
And is the expectation-
What I'm saying is, we had to use this.
We've had to use it and maintain it at that level.
Correct.
Which is a very small percentage compared to the 5% that you can have in E and D.
And we're keeping it at its lowest.
At the lowest we feel comfortable, I feel comfortable, I have to say. Going under five is-
Yes.
And Jane, do you know, or do you actually know, the expectation is to use the E and D funds in the second year to pay for the second half of the curriculum?
So we don't, we don't know yet. You know, one of the challenges, and I know that you all know this, is just as well, we don't- dealing with the revenue streams for this is ridiculous and they change constantly. So, you know, I wish I had a better answer, you know, I'm not sure.
And quite frankly, we don't know that these numbers are all up. I think not.
Come July, come July, these numbers can be completely-
It's just us, it's just how it works. It's so bizarre. How do you run a business like this?
Yes.
So Jane, do you need a motion for the program to have one? One motion?
Yeah.
Tara and I were just asking jointly, if the number that we're looking at,
Certified?
What we're calling the working number, does that include the, excuse me if I don't get this right, the floater teacher that we need to offset?
Yes, that's it.
Student, so that includes, that's still something.
So that they don't have the two class sizes that are over? Because that individual is actually in the budget right now. That, so what we're actually doing is we're reducing. That's how we had to get to Matt's working number, our working number. We actually took one of the two positions out. There are two actually. Had we had a different arrangement of classes, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't need either of those teachers, to be frank. But because we have the third and fourth grade over 30, we need to hang on to one of those two. So we reduced one FTE at Millville, but we're leaving the floater teacher there, for lack of a better title.
And we were gonna revisit the other piece of that.
The structure, yes.
Yes, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So like all like the extras are the things to start in this working budget?
Except for the Chromebooks.
The Chromebook, yeah.
And then K through five or one through five?
It's, it's a combination. There's actually, it addresses K through five. However, it's a slightly different configuration with the lower grades.
Passion tablets versus?
Um, no, actually, we still have the tablets. However, in speaking with the teachers, we decided that we do wanna still add more Chromebooks to all of the levels as well because the tablets are fine to read on, but there's other things that they wanna do to access the curriculum through the Chromebooks. So at the kindergarten level, we're gonna introduce stations. There's like four, there'll be four per classroom. At the first grade level, we're gonna have one card for two classrooms. And then once we get into the second through fifth grade level, it'll be completely one-to-one.
I believe, I believe, unless it's two also cards or- Yes, two, no, the first and second grade of the same card distribution.
Okay, so first and second grade is-
And then the one-to-one, yeah.
And then the one through five.
Yeah.
And that's part of this, that funding is in here.
Yes, Erin. So, next week, we have our open hearing where we usually have a starting number. I feel like I'm looking at what we're going to end up with, because where do we go from here? If we have to break down after next week and before we certify, this scares me. Because I don't see how we can, if this is our start, if we're going to-
Our start needs to be our end.
Yeah.
I think that's our end. A theory that we've gone with for so long too, that we start with the summer and then we need, and we need, and we need. I think there's a different, I think there's a different way that it's been approached where this is the end.
And I think, and I think we need to be clear about that.
There's very-
We need to be very clear when we, when we meet with the town and community folks and we need to say, you know, you have asked for, for, what's the term? Everybody uses it all the time.
Fair bones.
No, but all, everybody knows everything that we're doing. We're not hiding the doubt. Transparent, thank you very much. And we've, we have, we have will. And we didn't even, you know, there are some things that people spend a lot of time focusing and researching and indicating they need and we can't, we're not even addressing them. Like, we're not, and that's frustrating. I'm sure it's frustrating for them, but it's very frustrating for us. But we also know we can't ask Blackstone nor Millville for more, for more money. And so, so trying to dance within the program, this is the money. So it's not, oh, we'll take this and we'll take your thoughts and we'll break, there's nothing-
But we've already done that and I think that's the difference. But we also have to think, we also have to think of what we've done in the past. We've created this history of breaking down, breaking down, breaking down. So I think we need to have a good type of like communication that says, you know, these are the dates that we've met with our townspeople, you know, our selectmen. This is what we've done to get to this number, because there is a past history that we've broken that number down. So we have to keep that in the back of our heads that we created that.
And if I could, that, the, at the last joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Subcommittee, the School Committee, we had those numbers that had, that-
These two.
Yes, but the percentage increase to the town, it's like 6% and 9%. So they've seen, I think, Wendy, to your point, they've seen those large increases. They've seen what that looks like at level service and at Phase Two. And so this will, I think this will feel very different, because we did do-
And in the interim, we've met with members of the Finance Committees of both towns.
We have.
And we've had that conversation where we didn't have specific final number for them.
This comes to you all first.
That's what, and that was part of the reason. We've been working on it consistently, but it needed to come to the School Committee first. And we did have conversations with them where we explained, look, we're still looking at these big increases, here's level service, here's Phase Two. But know that we have been working and the School Committee has seen the things that we're trying to reduce. And we are going to get these numbers down. But I, to your point, Wendy, Dr. DeFalco and I discussed the same thing. We don't want this to be back and forth and back and forth and back and forth for the next month. There's no room to do it.
Right. But there's, but there's that history that is gonna be hard to break until we-
I mean, Millville's down to a one point, you can't, you can't get any better.
I can't get any lower.
Think of the comments that have been out there though, on the town floor. I mean, they're just, but they've been consistent and I think, you know, based off of the conversation-
And I think you're right, because there was some confusion last year.
Right, and I think that's just because of-
What we came at them with was a starting point and we were gonna come down from there and we're like, no, we had all of those.
And again, I think it was, I think it was because of the past history of what we've done as a, as a process. So I think, I think that's tough to break that process until we stop. And that's it.
Yep.
We definitely spent a couple of years highballing them, coming down from it. So getting people to understand that this, this is the low ball, this is as low as we can go, is gonna be a little tough.
It is, it is. And I think if we, if we stay, we don't, and that, that just has to happen, we didn't put anything else in. This is the only two things that we've put in and I, I don't know if I can even be argued. Like, I don't think that somebody could come on the town floor and say-
They're coming out of E and D.
But we know that we need the approval to do that.
We haven't always.
But that's the other point. We need them to realize that we need the approval to use E and D or that number does change, because the literacy program is important in the scheme of what we're trying to do. And I think the other point, I think that is important for the townspeople and the other boards to realize is that the Phase Two plan, what goes into the Phase Two, those aren't things that we thought were fluff, that, those weren't bells and whistles. Those events that are covered there were not bells and whistles types of things. Those were things that we really do feel would improve our district. We're just saying that we understand we can't do it all at once, which is why we had a Phase Two to start with. And so now, you know, so I just, I think it's very important that they continue to look back at what that meant and what those presentations, our department heads and our cost center supervisors.
Yeah, that was concerned.
You know, what they presented, that wasn't just for, that wasn't a horse and pony show. That was what we really think is going to improve our district. So at some point, we can get some of that back in somehow, somewhere. That's what we're gonna try to do, but my goal to reduce study calls at the high school remains strong.
Absolutely, absolutely, we're 100%.
Year eight.
We need a teacher in that high school.
Well, it looks like, it looks like our two, it looks like our two-year phase in plan is becoming a three, four, three, four, maybe five-year phase in plan.
And that's okay.
We need to, we've been really working to take into consideration the needs of the-
Well, and I also, I think there is a good faith effort to say to our communities, we understand, we need to work with you. But when our time comes and the capital campaign will come.
Absolutely.
We need to find the ways, and the OPEB will come. And we need to find ways to, you know, all those things that we have to try to build in. We have to create unified plans. There can't be school district and now towns, we're enforcing this on you, or towns saying to us, you can't or you won't. They have to be unified plans that we can grow the district, move the district forward, and have the reserve necessary to support our legal requirements, essentially. Go ahead, Erin.
Not to change pace, but I agree with everything you said. So I think that at our open hearing next week, it just needs to be presented in a way of this is our budget. Not, we will have a, you know, a different number at, this is what we will certify at. But you're speaking about using the E and D. So here you have changes to Phase Two, so you're subtracting $550,000. And the last bullet, it says use of excess and deficiency for non-repeating course. So you've already said that is literacy. So $167,000. Is, is the 167 subtracted out of the 26?
Yes, so the total budget number that we present has to include everything that we are going to purchase.
And then you're going to subtract the E and D as a-
The E and D is one of the offsets that we'll present.
So we're not going to be looking for a special town meeting to use our E and D?
No.
It will be approved in the one line on the floor.
The hope is that-
That is how we've done it in the past.
The hope is that we will present to the towns an entire proposal of how we are going to use our newly certified E and D, because we've already proportioned some of it for the capital planning process and for the safety vestibule at the high school. And now we will add this piece to it.
But are we adding it this year? To Erin's point, are we adding it this year or in the 21 budget?
We're adding it this year through the 21 budget. We technically have to get it approved. Right, we, that's the total number. That is the total number.
That includes the E and D money?
But doesn't include 167?
It does.
Because it has to be in the total number then offset.
So what, so what happens is, we ask to have E and D used as a revenue, as a revenue source for the FY21 budget. That has to happen prior to July 1st.
Right, but the other? $100,000, we wanna use this year.
This year, correct. But we're gonna put it together in one request. This is what we would like to use E and D for. We'd like to use X for the capital, we'd like to use X for the safety vestibule, and we would like to apply $167,000 to the FY21 budget to offset the expenses for the curriculum. The plan. The hope is, don't understand him?
Any other questions? So do we need to approve the literacy curriculum so that you can put it into the meeting on the floor? To go to the towns?
I will have the literacy curriculum, the use of E and D for the literacy curriculum as part of a motion for our next, for our next meeting.
Understood, but like, we already approved the vestibule, we already approved the capital. We need to approve the literacy or can be done in one?
It can all be done in one.
So we don't need to make any motions this evening?
Not that I am aware of.
I assume that's what it was.
So the approval, the approval at the last meetings was more to allow us to start the process of getting the capital plan moving and to get the high school vestibule plan moving. Technically, they're not funded yet, because it was, it was contingent on the certification.
Right.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Done.
So move, yeah.
Be checked.
Good?